Call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Chairman Lloyd.
Here.
Vice Chair Thomas will be absent this evening. Commissioner Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Langworthy.
Here.
Commissioner Strong.
Here.
All right, could you all be joining me for the next slide?
Respect. Right about where I am.
That's sweet.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we move to public comments. Now is the time for our public comments for things that are not on the agenda. Do we have any slips here?
Yes Chair, we have Maureen Kennedy.
Good evening, everyone. I want to talk to you about our very, our First Amendment rights. Yesterday, I had a very bad experience Saturday voting polls. We don't really go to the Mountain View Church for our voting and we were meeting men at the door, my gentleman, who said we couldn't come in because of the shirts we were wearing. My husband was wearing this shirt that quotes Theodore Roosevelt. "A man says he is an American but something else isn't an American at all. We have room for one flag, the American flag. We have room for one language, you all know the rest." I had on my Trump, Make America Green shirt. I had on my Make America Green hat on. I know the rules. The rules are is you can't wear something that speaks to the candidates that are on the ballot. I know that you can't stand there and encourage people to vote for somebody who's on the ballot. We were met with such force and with very discourteous rudeness. We were blocked from even coming in the door. When we tried to explain to them that we know the rules, they just got more and more upset with us. And then we realized that we were at the wrong polling place. So as we left, they came out. They took down our license plate number and called the police. By the time we got to the next polling place, there was a woman who was at the first polling place who literally had to break the speed limit to get there before us. She ran past us to get into the polling place to let them know that we were coming. So of course, we were met with a security guard who was also very rude and very forceful in telling us that once again, we were not allowed to vote with those shirts on. And again, we were told, we told them that this was against our First Amendment, they were denying us our First Amendment rights, that we are allowed to wear those shirts. We know for certain that we were denied our First Amendment rights. I was very sad, I was very disappointed, and I was very hurt that in my country, in my state, and in my own city, that I was denied my First Amendment rights. These people were uninformed and they would not show us the guidebook, they would not read it to us even though I knew what it was, and they would not tell us their names. The man had, he said, well, my husband asked him his name. He showed him his tag, Mr. Wonderful. We asked the security guard what his name was, he said it didn't matter. So we spoke with the police. Even the Wildomar Police Officer, Officer Tyler was his name, and he said that it was a civil matter. He threatened to arrest us for disturbing the peace.
I'm sorry, you're out of time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the information. What was the name of the second polling place?
That was the BFW.
BFW.
Yes, and I have reported them to the registrar's office and filed a formal complaint. I spoke with Ken Calvert's office as well.
Ms. Kennedy, thank you for your information. I'll pass this to our city clerk. The polling places are not seen by the city, they're actually by the county board voters, but we'll definitely take your testimony and pass it on to the clerk who can pass it up to the board. So thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
That is all the comments, Chair.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Moving to the consent calendar. And a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I second that.
Does anyone need to recuse themselves from the minutes? Is everyone here on October 3rd?
Yeah, three in the class.
Making sure. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is to public hearings. Public hearing 2.1 zoning ordinance amendment number 18-04.
Alfredo's going to move the slides for me. Thank you, Chair. Go ahead and to the first slide. Alfredo, thanks. That's the second. Go back if you would, please. Okay, next one. All right, sorry. Anyways, Commission, this code amendment has been brought forward at the request of the City Council regarding temporary event regulations. The primary changes summarized in the ordinance that go forward to City Council is we're going to be adding craft fairs, open air markets as a permitted use in the two commercial zones that we have, the C1 CP and the CPS zones. We created a new definition for craft fairs and open air markets, which is in the temporary event code section 17256. We modified the definition of major and minor temporary events related to the number of attendees. And then the event use regulations, we amended in its entirety to be more consistent with what was on what we call our special event application form, so that the form will now have the same regulations and procedures as the code. Next slide, please. So staff believes the modifications are consistent with Council's direction and will bring consistency to how we treat temporary events. So therefore, we recommend that the Commission adopt Resolution 2018-26 recommending approval to the City Council, and that will conclude my presentation.
Do we have any speakers? Do we have any speakers on this?
Yes Chair, we have Mr. Kenneth Neads.
The City Council should remain the sole group allowed to authorize a change to the amount of time allowed for submission of a permit. The City Council should not, or the City Manager should not be granted that permission. And I have another question. What is the penalty for advertising an event prior to obtaining a permit? And how does one file a complaint when people advertise these events far in advance of even submitting their permit application? That's all I have.
I can answer that real quick. There are no provisions for advertising, so they're not in these regulations. And in terms of Council being the authority to have an application submitted before the 60 days, that can be presented to the City Council, but our recommendation stands as written in the code.
If someone does advertise in advance, that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to give them a permit in the first place.
No, that does not.
You're correct. Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
That is all, Chair.
All right, then I'll close the hearing and we'll move to Commission discussion. Do we have any?
No, I like that we're getting inconsistent with the application. I think that's a smart move on our part.
Yeah. But like, it's something that I hope to see more up here, too, having different small events throughout the community.
Absolutely. All in motion that we adopt PC Resolution Number 2018-26?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote.
Chairman Lloyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Langworthy.
Aye.
Commissioner Strong.
Aye.
Commissioner Ballard.
Aye.
Resolution passes 4-0.
That moves us to general business. 3.1 tentative parcel map 36492, plot plan 12-0053, extension of time for PA number
Ms. Oregon. Thank you, Alfredo. Mr. Chair, this is a proposed time extension for the RandCon Medical Office and Retail project. The project is located at the southwest corner of Elizabeth Lane and Clinton Keith Road. The project site's about 11.62 acres. You can see the L-shaped, backward L-shaped property there. And it's across the street from the future college school site. So in way of background, the parcel map and plot plan was approved by the Planning Commission in October 2014 and included the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration, parcel map to subdivide the 11.62 acre site into 13 lots for office, retail, and industrial uses, which are all future at this time. And the plot plan, which allowed for the development of 96,000 square feet of medical office, professional office, and retail uses on 9.3 acres of the 11.62. So this is the parcel map. Clinton Keith is at the north end of this. Elizabeth Lane is on the right side of that exhibit. And the lines are a little hard to see, but the southern part of it is where the industrial park will go in the future. Then the northeastern part of that is where the commercial and the two professional office buildings are. So I'm going to go through just a couple of slides here with respect to the design. This is the site plan that was approved. Again, Clinton Keith Road on the top, Elizabeth Lane on the side. On the side, I should say rather, the two, four retail buildings, two on Clinton Keith and then two on Elizabeth. And the two buildings at the bottom of that slide are the office and medical office buildings. This is kind of a summary of the plot plan. You can see there's about 31,000, or I should say, the medical office is 31,000 square feet. The office building is 42,000. Retail getting close to around 20,000 square feet, 22,000, excuse me. And then the future business park uses, which we don't have square footages for, but the mitigated nec deck did assume a development and all the traffic and all the mitigation was applied according to what could be built in the future. So these are a series of the architectural designs. This is the medical office building. This is the commercial retail building. If I go back, I think the, yeah, it's just the medical office building. The retail buildings. This is a professional office building that was approved by the Planning Commission. Lots of glass and concrete tilt up, nice design. So the request at this point is that the parcel map needs a time extension as well as a plot plan. The map was due to expire October 2017, but the Commission last year approved a one-year time extension to October 1st, 2018. Plot plan was due to expire October 2016, but under the old provisions, the Planning Director had the authority to approve the time extensions, and I approved two one-year time extensions on the dates indicated there, moving the expiration date to October, actually should say October 1st, 2018. So both of them will expire at the same time as they were approved at the same time. The applicant has conveyed that they've yet to record the parcel map or start construction. Thus, the application was needed that was submitted to us back in July, so well in advance of the expiration date. The applicant is now requesting a new time extension for three-year period in accordance with our municipal code. And in terms of the subdivision, that was changed back in December of last year. And then, of course, the most recent code amendment for plot plans and CUPs that have the three-year, two-year, one-year provisions, that's what this will fall under. So the new expiration date would be October 1st, 2021, if approved tonight by the Commission. So we've went through the findings on the EOTs. Both the parcel map and plot plan remain consistent with the adopted general plan 90s designations as well as the code amendments, or code provisions for each. It remains consistent and compatible with the setting and circumstances of the approved project, and then the application was filed well in advance of the deadline. So with that, staff has recommended that the Commission approve Resolution 2018-27, approving a three-year extension of time for the parcel map and the plot plan. And that will conclude my comments.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant present and would they like to speak?
Well, thank you again, Long, representing the RandCon group. I don't have anything to say unless you have any questions about the project. I'm happy to answer.
I have a question about timing. How is it moving ahead?
This project, it's been a challenging project, to say the least. The retail component and the office component was designed to play off the college, and as we know, that's been delayed. So obviously, that's been a challenge to get started. We've seen a lot of interest in the back industrial parcels. In fact, staff's done a tremendous job putting many developers our way. We're actually in discussions with one particular interested party who wants to take actually the entire industrial area, and we are working with them now on a potential design. There's no offer on the table, but the talks are increasing, and we are actually in plan check for the final map to record those two phases as we speak now. So we remain hopeful that that will come sooner than later.
Thank you very much. Any council discussion? All open to the public here. Thank you. Really a public speaker?
I have none, Chair.
What was in the?
It wasn't a public hearing. It was just business.
I like the fact that we're going to give them the three-year extension because based on my 16 years of real estate management, I notice that things move slowly when it comes to a lot of construction and stuff. And I'm in favor of approving this.
I agree that the overall plan does still fit with the community, so there are no change there.
The plan was very thoughtful based on the topography of the site, and so it's still a really good fit for our community, and so I would move that we adopt this resolution. But, excuse me, extension of time.
Can you answer how many more they have after this?
Yeah, it's in the staff report.
Sorry I didn't see that.
It's okay. I have a little cheat sheet and I didn't, I didn't bring it. The map has had the one, they have six years total, so this is, I think they'll probably have one, one more time extension that could be up to two years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I second.
Your roll call vote.
Chairman Lloyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Langworthy.
Aye.
Commissioner Strong.
Aye.
Commissioner Ballard.
Aye.
Resolution passes 4-0.
Very good. That moves us to 3.2 tentative track map 33840, extension of time, PA number 18-0146.
Okay, and I would be recusing myself because it is within my sphere of influence.
Thank you, Chair. This evening, we have reported you the Elm Street subdivision project. Project location is located at the terminus of Elm Street between Gruel and Grand Avenue, and the project site encompasses about 4.16 acres in size. A little bit of background, the Planning Commission reviewed the tentative track map 33840 on August 19th of 2015 and recommended approval to the City Council. The City Council approved the project on September 23rd, 2015. Within the Council's approval included a mitigated nec deck, a zone change from RR to R1, the tentative track map to subdivide the 4.16 acres into 15 lots for future single-family residential development. Here's a copy of the map. The tentative map was conditioned to record the final map by September 23rd, 2018, or it would expire. The applicant has indicated that he does not intend to build the project, but rather sell it to a residential builder. He's still marketing the project at this moment. Since the applicant has yet to record the track map, nor has he submitted any type of improvement plans to staff or review, he is now requesting his first of three time extensions for a three-year period. Should the Commission approve the time extension, it will extend the map to September 23rd, 2021. And if approved, the track map will have two possible time extensions left. Then the analysis of the extension of time, it does meet all the findings in that the map still remains consistent with the general plan, which is medium-density residential. It remains in conformance with the R1, single-family subdivision zone. The tentative map remains consistent and compatible with the settings and circumstances of the approved project. And the extension of time was filed on September 13th, 2018, in advance of the September 22nd expiration date. And with that said, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt PC Resolution 2018-28, approving a three-year extension of time for tentative track map 33840 to September 23rd, 2021. And all original conditions and the MND mitigation measures will still remain in full force. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much.
And Chair, as, I just wanted to read into the record that staff did receive a letter from Joanne Carey that voiced her opinion with respect to the project, so I just wanted to read her information into the, for the record.
I noticed that she had a concern about traffic, but I'm sure the traffic mitigation is in there. I remember. All right, do we have any public comments?
I have none, Chair.
All right. Any council comment? Commission comments?
Will her letter be addressed and will she be responded to that the traffic concerns have been taken into consideration?
The traffic is reviewed and the mitigation measures, which will be reviewed, which will be implemented when the project gets put.
So will, will we be responding to her letter in any way?
We can have engineering respond to her.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right. With that said, do I have a motion for approval or disapproval?
This looks consistent with what we've seen before. I'd motion to approve.
All second.
Roll call vote.
Chairman Lloyd.
Approved.
Commissioner Strong.
Approved.
And Commissioner Ballard.
Approved.
And that takes us to 3.3.
And I will recuse myself from the side.
Losing my eye.
Okay, 3.3 is a tentative track map number 31667, extension of time, PA number 18-0153.
Thank you, Chair, for that introduction. We have before you the Beazer tentative track map 31667. Project site is located in the northeast corner of Grand Avenue and McVicker Road. The project site is approximately 35.2 acres in size. Bit of background on the project. The map was approved by Riverside County Board of Supervisors on November 15th of 2005 with an MND. The state legislature has passed four bills since the July 15th, 2008 date granting seven years of automatic time extensions for the map. The Commission also approved three previous time extensions over the, excuse me, over the past three years that extended the recordation date for the map to November 15th, 2018. Beazer Homes is currently working diligently to finalize the improvement plans and record the track map, but just needs additional more time to wrap everything up. Thus, they're requesting a final three-year time extension to November 15th, 2021. And here's a copy of the map. With respect to the analysis of the extension of time, it does meet all the requirements. Again, it remains consistent with the general plan, which is MDR. It remains in conformance with all the development standards of the R1 zone. The track map remains consistent and compatible with the settings and circumstances of the approved project. And the extension of time was filed on November 21st, well in advance of the November 15th expiration date. And with that said, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt PC Resolution 2018-29, approving a three-year extension of time for tentative track map 31667 to November 15th, 2021. And again, all original conditions of approval and MND mitigation measures will remain in full force and effect for the project. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Do we have the builder?
The applicant representative this evening?
Thank you. Sometimes words just disappear. Good morning.
Good evening, Chair Lloyd. My name is Kelly Black, and I'm working on behalf of Beazer Homes on this matter. I'd like to thank staff for their presentation. I'm here and ready to answer any questions you or any of the commissioners may have.
How about progress?
Progress has been going at a steady pace. I thank Planning Director Bassi as well as Assistant City Manager Dan York. We've been working primarily on the McVicker crossing and the improvements that need to go in there. Along with that, we do have regulatory permits that require us to go through federal and state jurisdictions, and those do take some time. So that is why we are asking for this last extension.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. I really appreciate that this plan has the replica of the David A. Brown House water tower, you know, that has that Wildomar, you know, heart included in the plan, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Do we have any applicants to speak or comments?
Public comments, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I think the four findings speak for themselves, and so we'll just move ahead with a motion to approve.
To agree?
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, to adopt the resolution.
Motion.
To adopt.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ballard, second?
Yes.
And Mr. [inaudible].
Roll call vote.
Chairman Lloyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Langworthy.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ballard.
Aye.
That gets us to 3.4. Plot plan number 13-0089, extension of time, PA number 18-0161.
Thank you, Chair. This particular time extension is for the Villa Sienna apartment project. The site's located at the northeast corner of Elizabeth and Prelip Road, encompasses about 10 acres, and it's across the street from the Gables Apartments. The project, a little bit of background, was approved by the City Council November 12th, 2015, upon recommendation from the Commission. The approval included the certification of an EIR, general plan amendment from MHDR to VHDR, a zone change from IP Industrial Park to R3, and then a plot plan approval to develop a 170-unit multifamily apartment project on the 10 acres. So this is a copy of the approved site plan. The main entrance is off Prelip. You can see the stamped. You can see the stamped concrete there and the landscaping on the perimeter. Elizabeth Lane is on the left side of the exhibit. It's about, like I said, 10 acres, number of buildings, rec facilities, pool, spa. We even, if you recall, I think Veronica will remember that there was a community garden that was proposed with this project, so that's still there. It's that orange thing up in the right corner of the exhibit there. So this is a kind of an artistic drawing of what the apartments will look like, a Spanish-themed style. The unit types are, vary from one to three bedrooms that were approved, 170 units. The stories are up to three stories, and that shows you kind of the breakdown. Again, the project was due to expire November 12th of last year. I approved a one-year time extension, extending the plot plan to November 12th. The applicant has now submitted a new EOT in the fee prior to the expiration date. They are requesting a second time extension for a three-year period in accordance with the municipal code, and with the commission approval, the new expiration date will be November 2021. So the EOT request does meet all the findings with regard to consistency with the general plan and the zoning, site circumstances being the same, and that the application was filed prior to the expiration date. So staff is requesting or recommending that the commission adopt Resolution 2018-30, approving a three-year time extension to November 12th, 2021. That concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. Do we have the applicant? Yeah, we do.
I'm the applicant, Danny Brosay. I'm here to request a three-year time period to get the project developed.
How is the progress going? How is the progress going on?
It's going well. I mean, I've, I've got 19 projects throughout the state and about 8,000 lots, and everything has been basically on hold now for about two years with, you know, very small absorption on all projects. So this is not a new thing.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other question? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Do we have any speakers?
No, Chair.
All right. Council or commission discussion?
I think we're seeing a reoccurring theme here. People just need a little bit more time to get their projects moving forward, and I can understand that, and everything seems in line with me, so I'm in favor.
I do have one comment to make. I voted no on this when it came before us because I do not like the design, but since the council voted for it, the design is no longer a factor, and I do believe that they have met all the requirements to get their extension, so I have no problem moving forward for this, even though I don't like it. Do we have a motion to agree?
I'd have to agree with you on that. I'm not crazy about the project, but again, they've done everything they need to do, met all the requirements, so.
They did, the design was, there were some changes made early on, so where it's at is the finding, the four findings that were mentioned tonight, and I think it's appropriate to recommend moving forward and adopting this resolution, so I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Your roll call vote.
Chairman Lloyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Langworthy.
Aye.
Commissioner Strong.
Aye.
Commissioner Ballard.
Aye.
Resolution passes four zero.
Planning, commission, communications. Do we have any?
I'm just excited to see a lot of new restaurants will bring up their Wildomar, so if you have an opportunity to go out and support those, please do so. That's all I have.
I'm going to finish the other day, that's.
How was it?
Very good.
Good.
Very good.
This weekend's Veterans Day, so just remember our veterans, you know, appreciate their service.
Kind of along the same lines as our first topic this evening regarding the temporary use for special events and things like that. When I was on vacation, we went to a place that was called The Marketplace in downtown Honolulu, and it was a one-story structure, could have been a King Mark, could have been a Target at some point, very big building, and we'd taken all the insides out of it and put in either 12 by 12 or 12 by 24, 12 by 36, kind of like cubbies, it had 10-foot-high walls inside, and it had just overall lighting and air conditioning to cover everything in there, and six-foot walkways in between all these cubbies throughout it, and there were artists that were set up in there and jewelry makers and every kind of small business you could think of that only needs a small amount of space just to get out to people, and it was one of the busiest places that we visited the whole time we were there. So I can definitely see the change and shift going from the big box stores to the smaller areas, and that might be a way this area can handle it because we've got several big box stores in this region that may wind up going the same way with time.
That sounds like the exhibit hall at the Delmar Fair.
Yeah. Yeah. So yeah, this was right on the main streets in Honolulu, one of the busiest places near Alamoana Beach and Park, very top-low area. Anyway.
That's all I have.
That gets us to the planning director report.
Just have one item, commission. We will be having our final commission meeting of 2018 on December 5th. We'll have a couple more time extensions, as well as, we're going to have, hopefully have a study session on the second phase of our commercial design guidelines. So we're trying to finalize all those details from the meeting a couple months ago and get that together for the commission to take a look at where we are at the next step.
Sounds good. So your attorney report.
Thank you. No report this evening.
Okay. Do we have anyone with a future agenda item? No? Ben? That gets us to a German at 7:07.